Take this opportunity to move the sightline of the camera, which is located over there. Counselor Monley is going to be evently. And in view of other staff that are here, I'm suggesting that 5.1, which is the council procedure review, can be moved down after 5.5, so that we deal with the other issues. So that is amended. Second, Counselor Blair, on your favor. That is carried. So, welcome, Dr. Marticat and Claire Grant from the Coastal Health. It's nice to see you.
Yep.
And I gather Claire is going to do a presentation for us.
That's right. So, just as a quick intro, this is just to recognize the important work that you do in terms of making decisions that affect the health of the community. Claire's our Healthy Built Environment Policy Consultant, and that's what she does. And it's just basically formalizing the relationship that we have with you and recognizing how important you are in terms of the health of the community. And, you know, we just dealt with the water situation as an example in partnership, and this formalizes the great relationship we have. I also wanted to introduce Ruby Yee, a last year medical student at UBC. She's going off to Dalhousie to come back to be a family doctor here on the Sunshine Coast, so we like that. We want Ruby to stay, so I'll pass it over to her.
Okay, thank you, Doctor.
Yes, thanks so much for allowing us to come and just speak to this quickly. I've got a short presentation, and, oops, wrong one. What I just want to do is give a quick overview of the rationale for why health authorities are starting to make much closer, much more effort to work together with our local governments. A little bit about the provincial context under Healthy Families BC Communities. Talk about the Vancouver Postal Health process within that, and I've got some contacts and resources working. And the big context is that this is part of a big paradigm shift that local governments and public health have had over time. In the 19th century, the big issues were tackling infectious diseases: water, sewer. You guys know about these issues. We're still working together on them 100 years later. In the 20th century, the big focus was immunizations and injury prevention, seat belts, helmets, that kind of thing. The 21st century, what we're realizing, the new challenge for our public health is chronic diseases. It's the diseases that, in the past, people used to call lifestyle diseases. It's how we live our lives that affect so much of these diseases. But what we're realizing is lifestyle implies that it's all personal choice, and really so much is the context in which we live, work, learn, and play. For those of you, like, public health is separate from sort of clinical and hospital services that you're, many people think of when we talk about Vancouver Coastal Health. Our part of the health authority is to improve the health of all and reduce inequities. And reducing inequities is really key, because often if we only focus on the universal services, we often tend to inadvertently exacerbate the inequities and the health inequities that arise from that. 60% of our health outcomes come from how we live, work, learn, and play. It's the socioeconomic and physical environments. And the 40% are things like health services, genetics, other things that typically people think of as having a bigger impact. And it's geographic as well as economic. You can see differences, because our lives are rooted in where we are, and where we are is rooted in all kinds of history and geography and economics, you can see that there's a difference in how that plays out. And that's somewhat, that's where we are trying to move to some of the policy implications. Look at this in kind of a bigger light than simply programming or services which tend to come in after the fact. How does that play out? So it starts with planning investment policies and practices, the kind of decisions you make here in the room. And those decisions often impact the urban patterns: how people get around, where they go, what options they have. Those determine, in many ways, the travel choices and behaviors, which then we come down to it plays out in terms of their physical fitness, the food choices, traffic safety, pollution, the things that we tend to start to worry about at that end. So what we're doing now is just trying to tighten this up a bit. Public health and local government started together as the same disciplines were planning. And we kind of grew apart through the 20th century, and now it's coming back together. So the provincial government, the Ministry of Health, in 2011 started what they call Healthy Families BC Communities. And that's a program designed to get the health authorities to partner and to develop action plans together with local governments. And to support that work, one of the things they've done is partnered with a nonprofit organization called BC Healthy Communities, and they offer what's called Plan H. So you're probably familiar with the grants. You guys have received them in the past. So that Plan H, they offer workshops. So our workshop here in the fall that we had on the Seashell First Nation around sustainability and health, they facilitated, they offer the grants and do action guides. So it's all to support our work with local governments. Within Vancouver Coastal Health, you're not going to be able to see this very well, but on the outside, when we're talking about our healthy community initiative, it's a combination of the outer ring, which is the relationships and the processes that we set up. It's not new, as Paul said, for us to work together with local governments. We've had lots of staff, lots of interaction. What we typically haven't had is an opportunity to strategically set priorities together. What are some of the things we really want to work on? What are the things that will give us the biggest impact? And to move some of that upstream to some of the policy conversations. So building relationships and determining how to work together, that's where we've been at with Gibson's and with the partnership agreement or the collaboration agreement that you'll be discussing later this afternoon. Then it's developing the actions and the recognition and support. Inside are some of the content areas that we might work together on, and we have new and emerging ones. And you'll find on the last page of your collaboration agreement, the ones that we've identified for the Sunshine Coast. So here are the partnership agreements, and really, again, what we're trying to do is just provide, be a little bit more strategic and intentional with the partnerships, and so it's setting some of the structure. But we also recognize that the key part of working together and collaboration is the relationships. So yes, we've got the collaboration agreement, and that's really essential, and it helps to lay out some of the wheres and hows and some of the first priorities. But it's really an opportunity to build the relationships so we also can call each other, know who to call in each organization, to get the kind of support that is needed. You're one of our star communities in terms of the My Health My Community survey, in terms of getting huge results in May, and you did have a series of workshops on the early results. But in May, what will be, will be coming back out, and we'll be able to offer you more information, we'll have the report for your community coming out in early May. So that's one of the pieces. And we're trying to use some of this material to help direct where can we do better? What are some of the public health issues, and how does that play out? So here's just some of the resources, the Plan H, the BC Healthy Communities, and the ministry website, and my name and contact information. So I just want to give you a quick overview, and either Paul or I can take whatever questions.
Great, thank you, Claire. We'll be getting a report later this afternoon from our CAO on the collaboration agreement. But you did indicate that at the end of that particular agreement, these, are these areas, priority areas, that you feel are specific to our area, or are they sort of generic throughout the province?
We, it's a combination of things that, VCH feels like we've got something to offer on. But we developed that list in combination with Emmanuel, with the Sunshine Coast Regional District, and we've had conversations, and with Seashell. So those are ones that came up that kind of fit the needs of all three.
Counselor Sandring.
Thank you, Claire. I'm wondering if you have any examples of work that's being done in communities right now? I'm not sure where we are in the process as compared to other specifically rural communities, what it looks like on the ground happening right now.
Thank you for asking, because I realized when I finished, that was the one piece I forgot to mention. So right now, the first couple of years that VCH was involved with this, we really focused first on the urban communities and had Vancouver, Richmond, and the North Shore communities. In the last year, we've really been focusing a lot more on the rural communities. So also signing agreements within March, we've got Squamish, the city of Powell River, Seashell, we hope, Sunshine Coast Regional District has already signed, we're just finishing that process now, and yourself. So those are the ones coming up. In Powell River, we started doing some of the work early on, and that, they chose to focus on active transportation. So what happened was they'd just finished their regional transportation plan. It had been raised, but there hadn't been a lot of attention to the active transportation part. We hosted a workshop, and they were able to identify a number of other priorities. So, A, making sure people knew what already existed, making, sort of, supporting it sort of more broadly in the community. So the city of Powell River passed their cycling strategy using their gas tax revenues. There's been work done in the schools since, there's been work done on walking for those people who don't have cars to get to the trail system. So that's one of the examples. In Squamish, they're likely starting their official community plan, so they wanted to start really early, like, they're starting their planning in 2016, but they want to really look at, if they were to totally focus on using a health lens, what would that look like? So they used a Plan H grant to kind of map that out, and are looking at, how does that impact the high number of children, young children in that community? How do they plan for that? So those are some of the ideas.
So let me look a little bit more specifically, I guess, but could you update us on where e-cigarettes may be at? I thought I had seen some of the problems. Is it looking at treating the sickness like tobacco? Is that correct?
Paul, you might be able to speak to this more. My understanding is e-cigarettes, in terms of sale to minors, will be treated like cigarettes and outdoors space, indoor space. Do you know?
That is correct. So it's provincial legislation for minors. We're also getting that put forward for flavored tobacco. We didn't get fire with menthol tobacco, but we did with cherry and all that other stuff they put in it. So that's been some progress on the tobacco front.
And so would it be the expectation that eventually that there's some regulations by laws, or whatever you want to call it, in the moment around tobacco use? Would you see e-cigarettes as being embraced within that, Dr. Marticat?
I think that the town coming up with a tobacco plan, it would make perfect sense to include e-cigarettes, which the school district currently bans on school grounds. So, correct me if I'm wrong, or was that by individual principals?
They treat the current bylaw, sorry, they treat, they just treat their current policy around cigarettes as e-cigs being part of it. They didn't, they actually need to modify it.
Perfect.
They just, that's how they enforce it.
And what we talked about when we had the earlier meeting with Seashell and the Regional District was to have a meeting together with the three local governments to discuss which the whole suite of bylaws and choose what ones that might be appropriate all across the Sunshine Coast as opposed to doing municipality by municipality.
Anything else? I know you've been working with this group for the last while, and that's part of what you're reporting on. So I know you're, Sarah, that you can catch at 2:30, so thank you very much for coming, and you'll certainly be back with our CAO, where we had a discussion on this.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor.
745-822-7777, Gibson. Last spring, there was a mention of a study suggested by the health authority about the quality of the air in the area here. Has that been produced, and do we have any results?
Do you want to address that? Thank you.
To you, Mr. Mayor, and certainly I'm aware of the study, but we haven't come across any results of it. Specifically, I know the Clean Air Society, the coastal one, is in the process of, has applied, in fact, for major grants to develop such a plan for the coast itself, which is something that we're missing. And I'm assuming that's the one you're referring to. They're still in the sort of grant application stage.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, 5.2, the garbage collection and disposal. I don't know if you want to comment somewhat on the report there. I suspect there's probably some questions, but is there any background that you want to provide at this point? And, you know, I mean, we'll just start with some questions and see where we get to. The commercial refuse containers, I have to ask, what's the implication for businesses here? Is this going to require them to basically go out and get all new? These are these big bins, I think, that they're talking about, that the garbage truck uses a hydraulic system to lift and empty. And so I'm just wondering what, how many businesses and so on were acting, and just what sort of costs are involved here, and just how this is, and how much of a problem it really is.
Dr. Mr. Mayor, I think this is something that already has been, it's already in a court of requirements, I would say. And looking at the paragraph where we're talking about the conservation officers, or if somebody's commercial garbage does cause problems, there are ways for the visual government at least to acquire them to either, first we go down to fortify or replace the dumpsters. So I think there is some expectation there that garbage bins and disposal containers can be locked at least, or properly tucked away. And I think that's really what we're interested in, to give the town a little bit more say there as well, to require that, that it helps prevent it getting to the point that the conservation officer needs to come out and needs to address those issues.
So could I give, I mean, give me an example where this, where the problem is, that we're talking about, deals are strong or something down below, or not? And I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but I just, I want to make sure that we are clearly understanding what we're asking, what the implications are. Because, yeah, I guess it was, okay, so there were eight complaints in 2014.
Yes, and that led to four orders by the conservation officer, so some of those are complaints going to address in different ways, assuming. So I don't know all the locations, so I definitely could get more information to counsel, if you're interested.
I know specifics. Counselor Sandring.
Maybe I could just help to clarify, Andre, because I had the same question. So if I understand this correctly, we want to amend the bylaw to make sure that these commercial units are self-closing, self-latching, and capable of being completely closed. And so they might not be, they may not be that right now. So I'm just wondering, yeah, how many businesses that might affect, and if that's quite a cost to them, and if we've, if we've talked to them, if we've talked to the businesses that it affects before we go ahead and make this decision? Like, obviously, they must be warned if we're getting complaints, but I'm wondering if we've gotten any feedback or had any communication with them yet.
May I can help add some to the conversation anyway? So certainly, it's trying to improve the coordination between the conservation officer and the bylaw officer, who are ultimately the ones that respond to, we're talking about a practice. We don't feel that we're requiring new bins or sort of major expenses. It's just adding to the provincial regulation, in terms of a local regulation in this case, that also makes it an offense not to lock your bin. It gives a little bit more and more power to, I guess. Aside from that, you know, we don't feel that there's any requirements to invest in new bins or, the locations are often some repeated feathers. And so it just helps with the practice itself as opposed to, you know, day to day, not much is going to change, it's just at the end of the night, they should block the bins. Because what it's leading to is the unnecessary disposal of bears in this case, and the conservation officer and police is making the connection between these open garbage cans and the bears.
Okay, and so I guess, I mean, I don't have, I don't have a difficulty or a problem with the concept, but certainly how it's messaged and how it's enforced and, you know, how it's rolled out is, I think, important. So I think that's my only concern I want, maybe. I guess it's capable of being completely closed, like, the self-closing, self-latching, I mean, some of these bins I see are pretty rough shape, and so I suspect as long as they can basically lock them down somehow with a chain or something, maybe that would meet the requirement.
Yeah, it's either one of those. So both bins would basically run a chain through it and put a lock on it. The bins today, including our own bins next door here, is basically what we're talking Certainly, I think it's helpful to add sort of a phasing of this with, in terms of how we communicate, it's, I know it's a sort of mention here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it has to be written in stone, but it just has to be done with some consideration. Counselor Blair?
Thanks. From my point of view, having a lid on garbage containers is pretty much standard, best practice, and if there's a lid, it can be locked. But in terms of communicating it, one of the ways might be, it also, as much as it prevents animals getting it, also prevents illegal dumping. I think we're, we're going to talk later about people will put garbage anywhere that's open. So locking it at night actually prevents owners from incurring more charges for people dropping. So that could be part of it, instead of, you know, one track could, it's in their best interest as well.
And thank you for that comment. So I think if it goes forward, it should probably well, but I think it's just important to make sure that the bylaw officer or somebody is specifically out there with something, explaining the rationale and the points that Counselor Blair had just raised. Okay, outdoor fridges and freezers. So that one could be fine. Yeah, go ahead.
I think Mr. Mayor, I was just talking to the bylaw enforcement officer before we got to the meeting, and one of the other things he said, well, freezers are, have been proven to be tricky, even if they're locked. If you just use padlock, for example, on a freezer, that's not necessarily enough. If a bear thinks there's something in there that a bear likes, it will get it out anyway. So I think the text in our report says not permitted or located or equipped to such a maintenance accessible. The bylaw enforcement officer is suggesting it's probably best to not have it outside in the first place, but if it's properly locked, though, it would probably be fine. So it's a similar thing. Right now, we don't specifically, I think this relates more to residential areas, where we don't have real clear control, that sense of control, clear requirements, so to say. So that's another thing with this particular report, our requirements are a little bit patchy. Different things for residential, different for commercial, plus if you look at, okay, are we actually setting a stage that wildlife is getting out of the garbage? There's some holes in there, and this is one of them. And then the last one there is the park, the parks, parking containers, garbage containers, which is a bit of a different topic, that has to do with, well, that's just the abuse of these bins, of course, where people at household garbage might, they might have too much perhaps for this week, and they don't want to pay the little tag that we sell, and, well, there's a garbage bin for the town, they can take care of it. So it's a bit of a separate issue, but it's in the same category of how we encouraged our residents and business owners to take proper care of garbage. Thank you.
Okay. I do want to keep them a bit separate, because I definitely have different feelings on them. I just, I doubt, maybe the report didn't have current information on it, but it did say that the calls in respect of the fridges and that was 13 calls in 2013, doesn't say anything about 2014. I don't know. I can assume that there were no complaints in 2014, or it was just the report only dealt with 2013. I guess, I'm always cautious any time you're dealing with private property and people's homes and things like that, as to how much we intrude in there. I mean, obviously, if there's a significant problem resulting in, you know, wildlife having to be destroyed because of careless storage, I mean, that's certainly a valid consideration. But when we start to move into private ownership, private rights, I think we have to make sure that what we're trying to do is clearly outweighed by that intrusion. It's just sort of a philosophical thought more than anything else. Does anybody else have any issues around what's being suggested around fridges and freezers? Counselor White?
I guess I have to ask, I mean, theoretically, if we were to go ahead with this, the bylaw officer could enforce this to any freezer or dumpster that is not properly latched up. But on more of a practical level, this probably happens more often when that incident occurs, right? And I hear Mayor Rose's concerns, and that's the reason I bring this up.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think, no, I think to keep in mind of this is we are giving the town tools if we go this route, but we're not necessarily using them a lot. Because a big part of the work, obviously, moved by the enforcement officer, is to inform people, make them aware of issues that might be occurring on their property, and work with them to get a minimal solution. And usually, in, I would probably say, probably eighty, ninety percent of the cases, that's fine, problem solved, we don't need to use our abilities to tickle. We don't need to use our abilities to ticket people and all whatnot. But it's sometimes you have spots where things keep on coming up, and at some point, then the town needs to have a little bit of leverage to say, well, we are serious about this, because it might cost you money if you don't take it serious, as we do.
And I'm certainly aware that the current bylaw enforcement officer tends to use the hoarding system before moving into another stage. Okay, what about the issue about the town's refuse containers? I have to admit, several times, early in the morning, driving through town, of garbage spilling out all over the place from those refuse containers. Does anybody have an issue with that?
When you said, "I have to admit," you were going to confess.
No, no, not down there. Yeah, I think so. I know that's been an issue for merchants in the lower town as well. Those garbage containers, which is part of the reason they went to some of those smaller ones with the flaps, so you couldn't put big bags of garbage in them, and then they soon became overflowing very quickly. Anyway, basically, unless there's anything else, are we content with the recommendation that we're seeing here? Councillor White, you can move back, ten seconds. Councillor Sanjanko, in favor of them? Hey, thanks, Sue, for the report. Oh, yes, okay, here we go with this one, two, five point three. This echoes the comments I was making earlier, to some extent, with where's Big Brother's line? Kind of what I'm always looking at here. So I don't know. Right now, what you're saying is that the hoarding is an outdoor accumulation of building materials is what's... Yeah, go ahead, Andre.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have a wording around building materials or discarded materials. But in the case of hoarding, this is really about hoarding, which is a very tricky topic. Because we're talking about people's health, and at some point, at some level, it's a health issue. But it sometimes becomes a neighborhood issue as well, when neighbors get, well, upset about the accumulation of items. And the thing, the key thing with those items, in the case of hoarding, is they're not discarded, they're not building the materials, but they're very much actually wanted items. But there are just a lot of them, and they tend to, at some point, spill over into the yard. To the extent that we sometimes have these discussions on the staff level. Okay, this is an example, someone's so complaining, this is the picture, this is what it looks like. And it's, of course, a gray skill, right? Because a little bit is not out of the question, because you might have kids, and they leave their little wiggles somewhere. In that case, to be... But if you get to the point that a full backyard is filled with materials, that's, those are the kind of examples we're talking about here. And this is one of the things the town can do to help match people in the right direction. Although this is also something that other agencies sometimes need to step into, either, I think it's the Ministry of... Oh, Children and Family Development, something like that, or Vancouver goes to Health. If there's a serious fire safety hazard, that sometimes the fire department can make the argument that will convince the owner, if need be, force the owner to at least make it safer. That's usually what happens, that the problem gets reduced, and it'll be fine for a while. So this is one of the things that the town could do, and right now, we are missing that particular category. So really, if you look at it, right now, we can't really do anything about hoarding, because those items are not discarded, they're not building materials. So we're kind of, our hands are tied in that sense. And this is an option, we could change that, and that way, we would have another argument in the same category as talking with the garbage, where we say, well, where we have another argument with an owner that needs to change behavior, that it should change, because there are consequences to it.
Yeah, I definitely support this in principle, because I have seen at least one example, really, at least they might be the one that's mentioned in the discussion case here, really serious, unquestionable hoarding location. On the other hand, I think, I mean, the input I'd like to give is that we need to be really careful about how we draw the line, because even when I read this first sentence about derelict vehicles, discarded garbage, yeah, that second, discarded garbage is definitely a problem and would characterize the location I'm thinking of. But then overgrown yards that are often full of blackberries, well, I mean, I don't see a problem with that. I mean, it might be a bit frustrating if that's your neighbor, and they're not keeping their yard tidy or tidy, but I think that that would be stepping over the line for someone like, somebody who's not keeping their landscaping tidy or, even derelict vehicles, I mean, if some yards are big enough to... I know people in my neighborhood who like, make projects, and some neighbors might complain about it, but I haven't a problem with it. And I think they're really serious hoarding cases that really detract from neighborhoods and property values. And those concerns that are mentioned here are the ones that we need to be concerned about.
You know, Andre, of the wording that being suggested, outdoor accumulation of possessions, if that's been used anywhere else, where's this kind of our draft of it? I'm just trying to figure out if anybody else, you know, has a really tackled this issue.
We're definitely going to look at other examples, I think Sue already did that. Right now, we don't have proposed texts, so I think the quote that you see there on page twenty-three is actually from our current bylaw, it's the language our current bylaw uses. It's not too old, so I would think, I would hope it's fairly current, twenty years. We will have a look at that, see what else. And I think on this particular topic, there is more development more recently, because I think there has been a bit more attention to it in the last five to ten years. So once we, if you're interested, we'll come up with a text proposal, and we'll definitely look at how other communities have read this. And perhaps also, maybe looking for wording that makes it really clear for current and future staff that this is only for, well, serious hoarding cases, right? And not just for somebody that mowing his grass in time.
May.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, what I was going to mention as well, just to pick up on Andre's point, is that this is just direction to bring, it's not just direction, but this, after today, assuming you support the second piece as well, who would bring you back the bylaw? Then we also have to look at, on the overall bylaw, that the implications of the changes are, so to make sure... That would also include, obviously, illegal review, to make sure we're not impeding on the fridges and freezers' personal rights, which, I add my name to that list.
That's mine, and that's kind of where I was about to get to, is that it's really just looking at a way of addressing the problem. And I recognize, you know, the right of the person that's next door as well, because, you know, it affects, it can affect their enjoyment of their own property, so I don't discount that way, any means. Just trying to achieve that appropriate balance. Saw those sorts of disputes in Vancouver, I think there was sort of the people that wanted to do rural gardening on their front lawns, and the other one wanted to have a honey green on theirs, and so their neighbors were at lots because of the, you know, respective properties. So really, then this would just be to have a look at that and come back, if you're okay with that. Councillor Sanjanko, move to sound, Councillor White, second, all in favor of that. It's very... Okay, thanks, Andre. Okay, this one, this one, which is five point four. Really need to go walk through this one very carefully, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a variance request for two particular topics, so I'll try to explain each of them one by one. I think for the first one, we're going to look at figure two on page twenty-seven. And that has to do with lot size and subdivisions. So it's a bit of a technical topic. So in this case, if you look at lots nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, but also fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, which are in the middle of the drawing, those are lots zoned, or they are in the area zone for RC, which is the cottage zone. And that particular zone has not only a minimum lot size of two hundred and eighty square meters, but also a maximum average lot size. So it says that the average in subdivisions for this particular lots in the RC zone, the average should not be higher than four hundred. However, in this case, the average is actually slightly over. And background to that is that this layout was really already laid out or designed as part of phase one, but never subdivided just yet. And back then, I don't think there was, I don't think it was called, or maybe there were some ideas about it, but I can't find anything about it. Because in phase one, that this same issue has occurred on a couple of lots as well. So now there are two options, so either there's a variance on that particular provision in the bylaw, or maybe it could be fixed, and that's where the dotted line comes in, in page twenty-seven. We tried to squeeze in another lot, seeing if that would work. But our conclusion as staff is that we agree with the developer, that's not very practical to do. Mainly because if you squeeze something in, which seems to be the only location possible for that, because you have the lane on one side and the road on the other side, you don't have the minimum requirements anymore for those remainder lots, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, to still be viable. So that's complicated, they are saying, that we don't see easy ways out here to make this work within the bylaw. That has to do with the fact that the zoning bylaw also has a minimum width, a minimum depth. And if you add in those dimensions, and if that land is currently available here, you can't really make it work. So that's the variance, so it's a very technical variance of little consequence, if you ask me, as far as... But it is slightly higher than that particular requirement. Now, coming back to why that requirement maybe is there, it has to do with the, I think, a desire back then, when that bylaw was developed, to make sure that the cottage lots are indeed smaller than regular single-family lots elsewhere in town. And regular lots, they start at five fifty-five square meters in R three, and for duplex, you need at least six hundred and sixty-six. So those are considered regular lot sizes in Gibson's. And by having a maximum to the average of four hundred in this case, it's probably a fairly arbitrary number, but it makes sure that there is a separation between regular single-family lots and cottage lots. So that's the background of why it is in the bylaw. But in short, there's not really a way around it easily here in this subdivision, so that's why staff is supporting that particular variance. That's quite a bit of detail, I think, is that enough for now?
Well, no, actually, that was, that made sense to me, I was having trouble trying to figure out that, and I get that you're explaining. Okay, Andre, really, it doesn't change all on the ground, so to speak.
Should I move on to the next item?
Last one, any questions on that? Yeah, Councillor Larry?
Sorry if it's already in here, but I assume that lots nine through thirteen, it was looked at making each of them narrow to fit six lots in that five lot. I guess those are also in the same zone, aren't they?
Yeah, that's right.
Minimum width is ten meters. Could you, could six lots not be fit into that nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen rectangle?
That's a good question, I did look at that. It's not just ten everywhere, it's only ten on the corner, so it's a variety of sizes that we need to play with them. I could explore that, if you're interested. I don't know all the other minimum sizes, there's ten, twelve, and thirteen. So with twelve, fifteen, fifteen, and fifteen, there is some spare room, but I'm not quite sure if there's enough to fit in another twelve or thirteen. So I would need to do the math on that.
Because the second question to you, the mayor, is is there urgency of this, could you bring this back, or the rest of the committee is inclined to let it go ahead? Just wanted to make sure that all the elements are, you know, with that.
So you're saying that the frontage needs to be ten meters is the minimum?
Yes, but only for corner lots. And if the lot doesn't have access to a back lane, or is not on the corner, then it's twelve or thirteen. I have to check back into my zoning bylaw what it is. So the lots that Councillor Valerian is referencing to, they don't have a lane to the back.
Right.
Ten, and eleven, and twelve, and thirteen are not on the corner. So it might well be that the width there is thirteen. I don't have the zoning bylaw with me, but it means that you would need to find another thirteen meter before you can squeeze one in there. I doubt it, because you only have the fifteen, so there's two for each lot that you could squeeze, so to say. But I will double-check, because today, we're looking at starting the notification process, and the actual consideration of the variance is then in the near future. So I'll get back on that in my follow-up report.
Okay, all right, so that's fine. Okay, so the second part?
The second part has to do with a different zone, R L L. It's called a large lot zone, and lots are not particularly large, but they're larger than the cottage lots. Those lots, if you look at, it's probably most clear on page string six in the figure one, because now we're talking about lots numbers one through to eight, in the lower left corner. And you can see that in this particular subdivision layout, they're very narrow compared to the ones higher up, one, two, three, four, to the top. Those are the regular R L, R L L lots from the previous subdivision. And that zone is either a single family or a duplex, and the minimum size is eight hundred square meters. So it's quite a bit larger, actually, it's a somewhat larger lot. And the background of that zone is that it's supposed to provide a transition between the subdivision and the agricultural land reserve, which is across the road, on Plain Road. There's three parcels of A L R on the other side. So where this variance request is about creating an option to, even though the development will look the same, so we're still looking at building duplexes there on a combined area of eight hundred square meters, and by splitting them into, which is possible since 2012. So since 2012, the local government allows buildings to share wall, party walls, the technical name for it, but still be on their own property, as opposed to being part of a strata where you are sharing land and upkeep for buildings. The party wall still needs to be maintained, of course, but there is a different type of agreement that can go on title. But with that in place, you can actually have your fee simple situation for each duplex half. And that's what we're interested in here. Where, so the duplex would still be built, but instead of... Instead of being forced into a strata situation, there is the option, or actually, you can build this or sell this as a fee simple half duplex. That's the goal of that particular variance, and by doing that, the way to do that is to play with new lot size setbacks in such a way that we ensure that the only thing that can be built is a duplex. And also, it can only be one duplex on one fee simple lot, so the density doesn't change. And so the result is a development that looks exactly the same as those larger lots next door, but it can be sold in a different way.
All right, so just so I'm clear, if we look at lot one and two, then in the area that's being proposed, duplexes straddle, with those two lots, there would be only one lot one? No, a duplex would straddle over at least two lots. Yeah, so, okay, so there's basically eight lots there, so there'd be four duplexes.
That's right.
But, for example, in one and two, that would be free simple, or fee simple ownership, let's straddle lot one, basically, of half the duplex.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I mean, I personally, I think that's terrific. You know, I've talked to you from time to time about looking at row housing, we should be looking at row housing here in Gibson's. And this is not exactly... And, uh, this is not exactly row housing, but it's a step perhaps in that direction, uh, because there is a desire by people to, um, be able to have the reduced cost of shared buildings, but to have fee simple ownership rather than be part of a strata development. So, uh, I, personally, I think this is, uh, yeah, a good, a good move. Uh, Councilor Larry?
Yeah, I think this particular one makes sense. My question is just, uh, a note about developers finding more and more difficult to sell this. Is it typically the town's role to help, I mean, is that not the kind of market research that should have come beforehand? I guess, how much are we kind of bound to adapt to changing, you know, to help developers adapt to the changing market? I'm just wondering what precipitous that...
Okay, figure, Mr. Mayor, um, um, as referred to the developer, so, um, this is actually something that came out of discussions we had, and, um, we're actually talking about row housing earlier on, because he's also working on subdivision to the east for the remainder of his space too. And, uh, we were trying to promote the concept of row housing and explore with him if there were options for that in the, in the, in the newer parts of the subdivision, and I'm not on this map. And, uh, he, he didn't feel that was suitable there, because he would like to combine the lanes split on the side. Uh, in this particular area, he's using what he already had, and through the discussion we came on this, we came to this concept. So, um, um, I do see, um, benefit for the town as well. This is, uh, a new type of development, it makes it easier to do a development like this, and also I see a benefit in, um, well, if this is something that the market understands and picks up on, I guess that's up to the developer to explore. If that's the case, I think it's also more likely that down road in future space of subdivision, if we get to row housing, there's a bit of a, uh, ground prepping for that taking place, so that's where I see a benefit. So for me, this is, uh, this is, yes, it's helpful for the developer, but it also furthers the goals that the town has for, for, for this subdivision and this development.
Figure, Mr. Mayor, just to, once again, that's to Andre's point, we are to have a conversation around, uh, housing, and how our current two thousand and six, you know, standard housing policy has kept up to changes in the market, which we have this constant feeling they were generally behind it. Uh, this is, instead of, I think the policy as it is today, sort of has the town playing a role sort of on the end of the conversation, and trying to use instruments, financial and otherwise, to somehow, um, provide what we might describe as affordable housing. Uh, this is an example where we're at the beginning of the conversation, and, aside from sort of flexibility on the policy, it doesn't trap future homeowners or the town into agreements and obligations. So that's sort of the intent behind it from this point, it's one of those, it's a rare opportunity, I should point out, because once it's built, it's built, and, um, thanks.
Well, um, it seems to me that really all that's being asked for at this point is to, uh, go ahead and notify the neighboring properties about these proposed variances, and maybe we'll see if there's any, you know, feedback on that. So, Councilor White, we'll move that. Councilor Larry, second to that, go in favor then, and that's Carrie. Okay, thank you, Andre. Okay, five point five, Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you heard while we were in the meeting, uh, the town has had, uh, a very solid, respectful relationship with Vancouver Coastal Health. Certainly, uh, during the D W O event we had last year, it was really evident, uh, the importance of maintaining a good relationship, and to that end, we've also been working with them on, uh, other issues, um, and they, we participated in, uh, in the my community by survey as an example. Um, part of the reason that Gibson's did better than other regions in terms of participation is, according to Vancouver Coastal Health, uh, the town's involvement in disseminating that and promoting its, its use, and, uh, certainly, um, you might recall from the earlier results and what we're going to hear later on May, is that that's from a public realm, and, uh, and there's a lot that we can do to support the overall community health goals. There was also the workshop that we did in the fall, and it was just after the election, and that too was to try to help make the connections between health and sustainability. Um, the agreement that is in front of you is, uh, it's been ongoing for about a year, and sort of conversations with different local governments, and the timing was, was critical as well. Um, what it hopes to do is provide, uh, some sort of clarity of roles and increased common understanding of each other's roles, as well as, uh, a more coordinated effort on, uh, how to address some of these issues that are raised in the agreement and what role we play in them. Um, and as Dr. Markey mentioned, sort of formalizes our relationship, so we, uh, we have something to point towards at some point. Um, partly, one of the pieces that excites me personally is the setting of priorities. Um, and I think that tobacco reduction bylaw might be one of those areas where it's very unnecessary confusion for a coast resident to have to remember that he's, you know, three meters away from the door in Gibson's, and he's seven and a half in Seashells, and the R D might be different, and, and you can extend that to other types of regulations. And so, the more clarity and simplicity we can provide in, in, in bylaws, as an example, um, the better we, we serve our residents, and I think that, um, this agreement does help towards that.
Councilor, is this covered at the regional district? It's not this specific application, no, this is one, I think, it's specific to town of Gibson's, but that same presentation has been made to the regional district, for sure.
Senator, uh, my apologies, I, uh, that inadvertently, we inserted the wrong, uh, report on the desk, you've got the, the actual report, and I apologize for that, uh, if we were sitting next to each other and we were doing the agenda, the wrong one went in. Um, and so, the, the agreement is the same, it's just that the cover report is got the wrong page on the front there. But everything I said applies to the right report.
Are you satisfied that, um, we have the resources to be able to sort of address this, in terms of, I guess, if I'm looking at, it's probably more around the reporting in the schedules, I suppose?
Yes, I, I certainly have expressed a concern, and we go, we, we do meet with, with Claire and Dr. Markey a few others, two or three times a year, and, um, I, I find that that's actually helpful, and I don't expect the demands on staff time or resources to increase by signing some real little deal.
Any further, uh, Councilor St. Jankel?
I definitely want to move forward with this, um, and I'm, I'm just wondering if there's been any talk as to what next steps would be, and I'm sorry to be looking ahead already, but I was just curious.
And just to clarify, Councilor, the next steps in terms of what happens if you support the agreement? Um, it would show up at the April seventh council, the next council meeting, to ratify. After that, uh, we would work to sort of finalize the agreement, just wording, not wording, but, you know, make it ready to sign, and, uh, Mayor Row and Copperoff would sign it. Were you asking something slightly different, Councilor, perhaps?
Sorry, just, um, so once the agreement's in place, what did, what then happens to actually start some of these priorities hitting the ground?
The three, Mr. Mayor, so, um, town representatives, myself, uh, C R D, and Bishop of Seashell, would meet with, with Claire and her group, and, um, one of the items, so we would add some sort of priority to these items, so we can't work them all at the same time. Um, I suspect they will put the tobacco bylaw action on, on the list, and, um, what, the alternative that we have in the absence of the, uh, the agreement, as you saw, there was a letter from one of their staff to council, and, uh, so there's different letters to different agencies with different timings, and it makes it very difficult for them to coordinate it and for us to sort of, um, if that brochure has not worked, in this one, we're primarily trying to avoid.
Okay, so that's done, moved by Councilor St. Jankel, second by Councilor White. All in favor then? And that's Carrie. Okay, thank you, Andrew, for your work on that. Uh, okay, so we're back to five point one, council procedure bylaw, and, uh, looks, um, page three, and there it sets up, um, just four of the items that were passed at council, that's kind of where we stop from that point. Um, so, um, I think the next one then is fifteen, uh, with respect to the order proceedings. Um, so, uh, Councilor White, I'll let you make your submissions on that, these are , uh, some big proposals from your, from yourself.
Sure, and, and I, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, the, this one in particular was, is, is a concern I've brought up a number of times, um, about how we have, it doesn't seem like our, um, order proceedings is really adapted to what we actually do at council, because there are often empty headings that are always empty, um, and, and I don't know if they have been used in the past, or if it was just because there was a template that was adopted ten years ago that, um, doesn't really apply to how we do operate here. And, uh, I think we should adapt our bylaw to, to, to how we do operate our meetings. Um, so I tried to, admittedly, in, in my proposal here on page three, um, I tried to condense it as much as possible, and that's even, it's, it's possible that I even, um, streamlined it too much. Um, but I also consider another, um, another alternative here, which is to simply add the words "when applicable," or, or have other, other wording, such as, uh, the city of Courtney has wording that, that says that, um, "except as council, otherwise resolves," which we already covered. Um, and in any event, only to the extent that business exists at a particular meeting under each of these subject headings, the usual order of business at regular meetings is as follows. So, if we were to adopt language such as that, or Whistler just has two words, "when applicable," added into their, their, their heading, which would be on, um, fifteen one, um, that would give, give us some flexibility not to have these empty headings through our, our agendas up to.
Okay, so, uh, what, what you're suggesting there, that is, uh, fifteen point one, that's in the draft bylaw on page ten, uh, the items that are there would, would just stay as they're set, but would change the preamble so that it would read, um, "the agenda for all regular council meeting contains the following matters with applicable, with applicable in the order in which they are listed below."
That, I think, would solve the, the concern I have, maybe, my, um...
Uh, Councilor Larry?
And I support that. I did like, or the, the suggestion that we, the council reports go in, go forward with, after some of the other reports, rather than stuck, backed out at the end of the meeting. Um, we've got some discussion about whether, uh, where, where that placement fits. If we're talking to each other, then I suppose it doesn't matter when it is in the meeting, um, but if there's some information that, um, that we'd like not to relate to the diagram as of the meeting, then I, I did, I thought that was a good suggestion. I could be incorporated, I guess, that would require the council reports on hand up to after administration reports, I guess, but, um, seemed to make sense to me. I still support that as well. And, uh, though it might be notice of motion is something, I don't know how it's always been handled in the past, but logically to me, that's something that could, would be something a Council would have included in the council, council report, if you're providing notice of motion.
Uh, well, a notice of motion is a pretty formal step. Um, it's, um, yeah, it's really reserved for some very formal, uh, procedures, so, and, uh, because I think it really should have its own category, because you're really sort of setting out to say, "I'm going to be ringing forward a motion to do X at the next meeting." And that's the notice to the, the other members of council that this topic is going to be brought forward in a, in a very formal way. Um, so I would certainly encourage it to be, chances are, if, if we adopt the, the language that you suggested, it may not appear in the agenda very often, but, uh, could be there. Uh, council reports, I, I don't have any strong feelings on, on where it sits in the agenda, it doesn't matter to me at all.
I'm not opposed to, maybe, that, after administration report?
Okay, so I'll move to add the words "when applicable," um, after following matters. Um, to move council reports, item N, up to appear after administration reports. Should make that go. And then, uh, we'd also have to change, um, item three to fifteen one, is that the corresponding letter, is there, if you go behind?
That'd be, yes, yeah, put behind.
Um, and additionally, as I said last meeting, I think we could say three minutes per councillor. Okay, Councilor Larry, so two, two minutes, two minutes per councillor. We, we all come under that, you know, that easily.
Hey, I'm, I'm not one to argue for...
Yeah, so two.
...for a long session, but it's, it is, it is the opportunity for the, the members of council to, you know, be able to brief each other as well as probably on what you're doing, so, I, I'd hate to see a short change on that, but, uh, I mean, three minutes is... And I, frankly, you could take them right out of there.
I'll say three. My, my motion, I'll say three, and you might can amend it if...
Okay, so, all right, so what we got here then, just so we're clear, to deal with each one of these, and that, um, well, actually, Selena, you're clear on that, that there? Okay, that's fine. So that's your motion, uh, for that change? Councilor Larry, second to that? All in favor then? Okay, so that's Carrie. Uh, your next one is, uh, dealing with, uh, section twenty. So, let's take them one at a time, I guess, so section twenty, sub one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So both, both one and two, well, it's really an issue with one, two, and three, and this is, again, template language that just somebody came up with ten years ago, and it seems like it still kicks around a little bit of problems, but it wasn't adopted for here, adapted here, um, for our council. Um, when I read these, it seems like number two really covers a concern here, that, that the formal, level of formality that we do follow, and having, having three items that basically say the same thing isn't, isn't necessary, so that's why I'm proposing this.
Okay, so, um, sub one, um, I, I don't think does the same thing. Uh, what that one, to me, is saying that, uh, if a member of council wants to speak to something, they, uh, they, um, basically attract the attention of the chair, whoever it may be, uh, so that they can be put in a, you know, an order for, for speaking. So in other words, otherwise, uh, people just jump in as they, as they feel like, so I'm not, unless you're seeing something different in sub one, I, I don't think I could support taking that one out. What it says is, "A member may speak to a question or motion at a council meeting only if that member first addresses the presiding member," and it seems to me that's necessary, but, uh, I'll hear what you have to say.
Okay, well, that, I guess that's, if that's the way we're interpreting, I mean, I can see it interpreted that way, but really what we do is we put up our hands and... I can see it interpreted that way, but really what we do is we put up our hands and we're not all saying, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. So that's why I don't find that really.
I see what you're saying. In my mind, addressing is the same as raising your hand. You don't have to shout out. I usually look around the table and if a person indicates they want to speak with their hands. So addressing doesn't have to be a verbal address. If that's what you were thinking of, I take that as you're looking to the chair, whoever it may be, that you have something you want to say. And that way, there's at least a, you know, an semblance of order maintained in terms of who speaks when. So, so that one, I don't support that, that change myself, but if you want to move that, that's, that's fine then. Or, or you wanted to accept it, that that doesn't create a problem for you. The question I'm going to ask you on each one of them is what is the harm that you're trying to address? And I need to see a harm to persuade me that it should change.
Sure, I guess that the harm is, it's really, I don't, I don't find the language to be very, very clear. I mean, I honestly read this, this addresses the presiding member as we, a counselor would have to say, Mr. Mayor, in order to speak and that's, that's, I, and that's problematic to me for one thing. One is, one is that's not actually how we do things and I recognize that it's open to interpretation. But secondly, really, a member may speak to a question when they are recognized by the presiding member. That's, that's really when a member may speak. And that, so, so if, if this is to be interpreted as, as really indicating that you're interested in speaking, then that doesn't work for me because really, really it's the presiding member who has to, who has to give someone permission to, to speak.
Okay, so, okay, Counselor Sanjanko.
Just in terms of trying to move forward a little bit, I, I, if we, if we, I think it's important that it stays in because that's how I interpret it as well, to get, have some order. But I do agree that we might be able to just tweak the wording to when recognized by the presiding member rather than first addresses the presiding member. Because really, we, you know, we indicate to you that we've got something to say, we wait for your response, and then we say it. But I think we're, you know, that's, it's getting a bit technical, but.
Is it with the permission of the presiding member?
Yeah, with the permission of when recognized, yeah.
As long as recognized doesn't mean I know you.
I hope so, yeah, acknowledged.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm fine, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with, with, I changed something, I just want to make sure that we're doing the same thing. So what's the wording you're suggesting here, Counselor Sanjanko?
If that member, as, and as recognized or acknowledged.
I think you're saying only, I think you're saying, okay, a member may speak to a question or motion at a council meeting only if that member is recognized by the presiding member. Is that, is that what you're saying? Is that?
I would say only with the permission of the presiding member. You may recognize two or three people with their hands up.
Yeah, I know.
Only if the permission.
With the permission.
Only with the permission of the presiding.
At the same time, I really have to be careful with not giving the presiding member some sort of overriding legal here because there is a right to, for members of council to speak. This is, in my view, is designed really to just deal with, you know, the orders more than anything else, that's all.
Counselor White. I support when, when recognized, I support that initial suggestion because that is something that Roberts rules uses quite often in terms of, in terms of referring situations like this.
Okay, so that you see the wording then, it's a member may, that's what Counselor Sanjanko was suggesting, a member may speak to a question or motion at a council meeting only if that member is recognized by the presiding member.
Only when recognized by the presiding member.
Only when recognized by the presiding member. Okay. I mean, I can work with it, it means the same thing to me.
To me, it makes it much more relevant, so I'll put, or is, I'll second that, I guess, if that's the wording.
Okay, so Counselor Sanjanko, you second that? Any further discussion? All in favor then? Okay, that's carried. Twenty, sub three.
Okay, and that's.
Okay, so you're, no, sorry, you go ahead and say.
Yeah, that's, that just seemed a little, to me, I think number two covers it.
Number two addresses a presiding member at a particular meeting. Number three recognizes that the mayor would always be referred to as the mayor even if they're not presiding? There may be times when you'd like to have that clause in.
Sorry, I see the distinction that you're making there. Just a few seconds. Counselor Blair.
Suggests amending two, two members must address other members by that person's title and their counselor and members, deleting number three.
Second that.
Okay, so two and three would be eliminated with one paragraph, and as, when you just suggested there, you moved that. Counselor White, second that. But that does seem to cover it unless I'm missing something. It does cover those situations. Okay, so otherwise, in, all in favor then? Okay, so that's carried. Sub six. Jacob, don't feel compelled to say. Sorry, sub six. This, sorry, excuse me, Andre as well, don't feel compelled to say, and sub to yourselves here. Sorry. You have to say. Okay, sub six, what's, what's your concerns here?
Well, here, here, I put it out, I put it, put it back to you, Mr. Mayor, anyone else to explain to me what this section means? I mean, really, it seems to presume that members who are called to order from a given point of order, which to me isn't always necessarily the case, because that's what he suggests. So that, I find that very confusing, very poor language. I don't know what was initially intended with this language. And then, and I remember, item C is also related to a point of order. And I mean, there are, there's definitely points of order, there's a, there's a section for them in nineteen above, which I also have an issue with.
All right, so here's, here's how I read that section. So members who are called to order by the presiding members, so Counselor Sanjanko is sitting over here yakking away, and I'm trying to listen to you, she should stop talking if I call to order. However, she might be yakking away because she needs to go to the bathroom. And so now she may wish to explain the position on a point of order. She may be wanting to raise a point of order about her discomfort. In C, I may say, Counselor Sanjanko, you don't need to go to the bathroom. So that decision can be now appealed to the body. That's what it does.
And you're right, that's exactly what it does. It may, she may raise a point of clarification or some other point of order in response to being a councilwoman.
Counselor White.
She may, but here it assumes that it may, I mean, anybody, maybe she's just, maybe Counselor Sanjanko is just yakking to Counselor Valeria and needs to be called to order and has nothing to do with any kind of point of order. So, and that's, that's why this language is, is, is poor.
Well, then, but if it had that A at that point, she would just stop speaking and rejoin the meeting.
So then maybe there needs to be more, but I, I don't understand it the way it stands. I just don't, and I, that's why I think it can just be deleted and we can rely on Robert's rules of order. Counselor Sanjanko.
I, I, I think that I, I understand Counselor White's concern because it does, it sounds almost a bit harsh, like it feels like, and again, this, this goes back to what we've been talking about, just being respectful. So, you know, it just means to me that if, that you want to call some order and if we are talking or chatting, that we need to, we need to stop. It doesn't necessarily mean that I have something that I need to bring forward. It just sounds like it's almost contentious to me, like the way A, B, and C, and I wonder, is that kind of what you're feeling, Counselor White? Or is it just, like, to me, A, A is almost a certain, making a certain point, and B and C sound like they're almost a different point. One is about running an orderly meeting and the other is if I disagree, you know, if I've got a point of order and I'm trying to make this big point back, but maybe we're just trying to run an efficient meeting, but am I misunderstanding?
Yeah, and B and C give you an opportunity to address whatever it was that was the distraction to the chair. So if, if the chair calls a point of order, or calls you to order, you have the ability to say, Mr. Mayor, point of clarification, I was trying to figure out what item five pointed to that.
Okay.
So you have an opportunity to address whatever the issue was. Without B and C, everything would just come to an end and the meeting continues and you don't get to go to the bathroom.
Counselor White.
So I think I just got to give this one a shot here because I, I hear that concern, I hear that interpretation. Ninety-eight percent of the times that I've ever been in a meeting where people are called to order, there's not some immediate B where there's a point of order coming after it. It's usually because there is some distraction or people are talking or there's some interaction with the audience or something and, and members need to be called to order and that's the call to order and business resumes. So, so Counselor Sanjanko is correct that it's a, it's a very strange combination of B and C with A, so I still, would still like to move to, to delete this, number six. And the reason for doing so is, I mean, and I think it, this is completely covering Roberts rules of order and, I mean, we have, we can fall back on Roberts rules of order and I think it's, it's well known to anybody at meetings that really the, the presiding member has, has an, can call everybody to order and that's basically the only premise we need here. So that's, that's the motion to delete six.
Well, and I will go back to, you know, sort of the overall thing that, yeah, one, one could probably throw this whole thing out and just say, well, go to Roberts rules of order, but I also know Roberts rules of order is very difficult to follow in some cases and trying to figure out what it means and does it mean, and people have different views of it. And in my view, it's, it's better to have as precise a manual in front of us as possible so that you're not referring partly here and partly in another, another place. That's just my, my take on it. But, and again, I'll, I'll come back to what I said to you earlier is that unless I see something that really I feel is, is a harm, you know, these procedure bylaws have been around for some time and certainly are right and true. Interestingly enough, actually, you weren't in the room at the time, but when we had the strategic planning session there with Jerry Berry, somebody asked about procedure by law at that time and he said, oh, why you guys be spending a lot of time on that? It's the same throughout most of the province, so just another observation, shall we say. Anyway, you, you.
It's irrelevant for the province.
Sorry. That's fine, so I'm, I'm not going to support this particular change, but that's fine. You're perfectly free to make that motion, which I think you just did. So your motion is to delete section twenty, sub seven, I believe. Sorry, sub six, rather. So is there a secondary for that then?
Do we need a secondary to discuss, discuss it any further?
No.
You may just make up.
Yeah.
Just to further complicate things, I think if Counselor Sanjanko had to go to the bathroom, she'd raise a point of privilege, wouldn't she? But anyway, that's.
Quite literally, yes, okay.
I'm, I'm all in favor of cutting things that are valuable, but in this case, I think it's a, it's a useful repetition of Roberts rules and it gives, it gives a bit of work. So I have difficulty with, for, for, let's say, the three lines of removing this.
All right, so. All right, so probably the easiest way to deal with that one is there's no second one, and we'll leave it at that. Let's go on to numbers twenty, sub seven. Seventy, or seven, seventy, thank you.
So I, I understand, I think I understand why this one is here and it's, it's about, it's supporting the concept that once we make, once we make a motion, once we finish with that, with that piece of business, we move on and a council or should not continue to be talking about a business that's been completed unless it's making a motion that the vote be rescinded. So I understand that intent, but it, I think it, it ends up being too restrictive unintentionally because, I mean, I can think of an example where, at a recent meeting where we were dealing with, even today, I mean, there were two, two related items on, 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 the bylaw officer brought forward two, two reports. I don't think, I think it's for, for us to refer to the last report if, if a counselor wanted to say, well, we supported the last one and, and that, that, that last motion, so therefore the logic is that we should support this one as well because of this, this connection between the two. And I think there was a similar issue where we had a, a series of motions on the property up on Huff Road, was like that, there were two connected, connected issues. So that's where I see that D here is probably well intentioned, but it's, okay.
Selena, you have a comment on that?
Yeah, just, this one in particular, it doesn't say that you can't speak about the subject matter for previous, previously voted on item. It says you cannot speak about the vote. So if you were on the losing side of the vote, you cannot continuously bring that back and speak to the vote and how, how council addressed that and brought it to completion. You can certainly talk about the subject matter as it arises in other discussions, for sure.
Okay, well, I understand, I can see that distinction and sort of zero in on it. Yeah, so I, you know, from that point of view, then, Counselor White, to just kind of address that thing, maybe what you're trying to get at there because it is, once a vote, once a vote's been taken, it's, it's not up to, to any of us to really go back and start trashing the others about the way they voted, but it doesn't, doesn't mean that the, as the corporal just indicated, that doesn't mean that you're completely barred from, in some fashion, referring to the subject matter, I suppose. Does that explanation provide you some comfort?
I, sure, I mean, if that's, if this is a, you know, I still think that, that you could, you could, I don't see a problem with a counselor saying, well, you know, we voted, we voted in favor of the, the first report being brought forward, first recommendation being brought forward by the bylaw officer and here's another, another issue that's out there that we should support as well. I don't really see a problem with that. I think it pays complete sense, but, but I, I see the, I see the greater problem that this, this issue is trying to address.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. So next one we have was sub twelve. Is your issue eleven or? I think it's, oh, well, I see, okay, I was looking at the, the, we were talking about change, okay, so I guess, sub eleven, then I guess.
This is probably really the central issue I have with this, with this section here. It's, and it's that I, I don't find that we, we actually. Is, and it's that I, I don't find that we, we actually practice number 11. So, and, which is good. I think we, we, we follow a much better, better way of, of limiting speech and, and following kind of limitations on how long a person can speak. And I think it would be simplified and reflect what, what this council actually seems to do by making those changes that I suggest on page four, which is that a member may speak more than once in connection with the same question, only after all eligible members have been afforded the opportunity to speak. And a member may speak to a question for longer than three minutes only with the permission, for longer than three minutes only with the permission of counsel. And, yeah, the reason why I think that's an improvement is that this concept of having fifteen, limited fifteen minutes is, is much longer than, much, much longer than what, what I see here. And I think, I think that the concept there is also that maybe it's a accumulated fifteen minutes, but still, it's, I think it's impractical to expect that, that the mayor, or the presiding member, or the corporate officer, anybody's going to be there with a stopwatch, adding up-
Sorry, we have.
Adding up somebody's two minutes, and then their three minutes, and then their, their ten minutes, or whatever. I mean, I think it's, I mean, I think the, the simplified language is, is going to be an improvement.
Okay. Counselor Sanjanko?
Unless there's any reason from the corporate officer why we could not, yeah, change to this more simplified wording that Counselor White put forward, I, I can understand it more easily, and I actually would, would support it.
Okay. So I guess there's, I mean, there's two parts to this, to the 11 and 12, and to make sure that we're looking at each of them. So the, so the current, uh, the change to 11 would be that, would simply mean that when we're talking about a particular topic, as long as the presiding member has given everyone the opportunity to speak on it, only then does the, I'll say, the first person have an opportunity to speak on it again. Okay? Okay. So does that take away something in the current 11 that, that could cause a difficulty for anybody? Um, so under the current 11, you can speak more than once after all other eligible speakers have the opportunity to speak. So that's basically the same thing.
Yeah. The only thing it removes, uh, with respect to 11A and B, if you look at the, the proposed new 11, uh, with, with respect to 11A and B, it removes your rights under B to respond, um, in debate to sub, to a substantive comment. So if, if you have, you've provided some substantive information, somebody else responds, you may have to wait until it goes around the table again before you get to address that comment. So it could cut down on your, your ability to have a back-and-forth debate freely. But it, it could, it can certainly replace 11A, 1, 2, and 3 nicely.
Okay. So let's just try to see a scenario here, I guess. So Counselor White puts forward something, and I've got three other speakers that are waiting to speak on it. Counselor Sanjanko says something that actually isn't what Counselor White was saying. So Counselor White, before that whole debate goes around off track, perhaps, would like the opportunity to clarify that.
As the move of the motion, he has the opportunity to reply.
That's what that's likely.
Each and every one of them, I, yeah, I don't know if that's a good, yeah, I think it's better to wait, it's, sorry, especially with a five, five-person council, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, I, I think that's kind of a loophole for somebody who's made a substantive motion to, to really dominate the debate by, or being able to reply to every single person who, who, uh, does any- All right. So let's just park that for one second, because we need to tie in this, this time limit part as well. So certainly, my interpretation of the current 12 is that it does restrict a member from speaking longer than a total of fifteen minutes throughout the whole meeting on a particular, uh, topic. So it's designed, I guess, to prevent, I would, you might call it filibuster, I suppose, where somebody goes on endlessly, and we're not getting any further ahead. So, um, what's the effect of your recommendation on that? Yours is, a member may speak to a question for longer than three minutes only with the permission of counsel. And I can't remember, didn't, wasn't there, was there a five-minute?
No, it's, it was 10 minutes in committee and the whole 15 minutes in council, and that was a total of all, the total of all of your contributions.
Right, okay. Right, okay. So a member may speak to a question for longer than three minutes. So the effect of this would be, when you've used up your three minutes, I won't have to hear you anymore.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that what we want to do?
Just for the entire, just for the entire discussion.
Feel free for-
Each time you speak.
Yeah.
With knowing whether the number of times you can speak.
Okay. So there's a, there's a distinction, okay, because the current bylaw is saying that, you know, you're, you're limited to a total, and I, I, I hear what you're saying about the stopwatch kind of thing, all right? I mean, I, I do use my iPhone there, but it keeps going off. So I-
I fell asleep.
So I lose track. So I, I do hear what you're saying. But I think, as, as I look at number 12, the way you phrased it there, what it means to me is that when you've used up your three minutes, the rest of the council doesn't want to hear you anymore, you're, you're, you're done. And I'm not sure that that is conducive to, um, a full debate would be my concern. So I, I, I don't think I can support it just as, as it, as it is for that reason. I, I do believe there should be some sort of cap, so that, as I said, the meeting can't be filibustered by somebody. And if you can't make your points within, you know, a reasonable amount of time, you probably, probably haven't got a point to be made. But anyway, I'm resting with this. Counselor Sanjanko?
I, I think that's why I was maybe too quick to agree. In my view, I would like to encourage something that, that encourages concise conversation. If you're prepared and you know what to say, you can make a pretty good point in three minutes. However, I do agree that it might not be your only three minutes that you want to speak if the debate continues. So I, I don't think it's quite complete.
Yeah. I could put that forward as a, a member may speak at, okay, speak at one opportunity for longer than three minutes only.
Add into a question. Actually, I just realized, too, I guess we better be careful here, because 11 had the time limits for council, and 12 had time limits for committee and the whole, and so we better be careful what we're, what we're dealing with here. Now, because, you know. I, I think we need to sort of separate these out, because certainly I've heard it's the desire of this council to have a much more, well, relaxed, I guess, was it, or reused interpretation of the rules of committee and the whole. So I want to be careful about what we're changing here. And if, if we're going to address that, too, no, sorry, no, no, go ahead. Um, your little section for committee and the whole in part six, so I do find that, I mean, I, in general, I like the concept of, of addressing how committee and the whole could be different, but I think we've, we've done that by saying that it is more relaxed. And if there is, if there really does need to be some kind of, some kind of information, some kind of clause about how committee and the whole is, is treated differently, I would look for that in part six, rather than number 12, or I guess, right now. And, and on top of that, I, I don't think it's really necessary. I mean, it is kind of tied to the, the way that we do think in, in number 11, how it's different from number 11. And committee mentions the 15 minutes. Again, so I don't think it's necessary. Okay. So, so I think maybe what we should, we should, we better make sure we're separating these out. If, if number 11 is really dealing with council meeting, so what's being suggested there is really, um, for the moment, just to try and make sure that we're following this, is that your, what you call 11 in your recommendation or proposal here would maybe be a subparagraph A, which says that a member may speak more than once in connection with the same question only after all eligible members have been afforded the opportunity to speak. Then there probably should be a Sub B under 11 that deals with this time limit part. And currently, is that a member can speak to a question no longer than 15 minutes, a total of 15 minutes, except with permission of the council. So need to try to figure out how we reconcile that time with what, you know, what you're proposing to make sure that, in my view, we're not saying that, you know, once you've had your three minutes, that's it. Everybody should have their 15 minutes of thing, right?
I'm proposing in one opportunity, the language there, maybe because that's the, the presiding member grants somebody a, an opportunity to speak, and then should be a three-minute limit to make their comments in a concise way.
So you, you would be saying that a member, um, may speak to a question, or-
Not to a question.
Okay, sorry, what, what did you suggest? Yeah. Maybe flip it around, two, two, earlier.
So a member may speak in one opportunity for longer than three minutes, or maybe, it would be, a member may speak for longer than three minutes in one opportunity only with the permission of the council. But that, that gets at what I originally, originally intended. And I, and I thank, thank you for pointing out that to a question, I mean, it seemed like it could be for the whole debate.
Counselor Sanjanko?
So would we then leave the total cap in of 15 minutes, or, or 10? Because that would be three times the three minutes, if you got three minutes, permission of counsel, that would be three times the opportunity to speak to one subject. But I do agree with Mayor Rowe that we still need, I think, a total cap in there if, if we're debating something.
I, I really want to be careful. I'll, I'll tell you, tonight, for example, I will speak for more than three minutes on a particular topic. And I would hate to restrict it by this to cut my remarks short. So I would be, I, I, you know, I do appreciate your, I, I appreciate the objective you're trying to, absolutely. I just want to make sure that it's not in a way that affects debate. I'm not sure three minutes is-
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just come back to where I'm coming from here, which is that, and it's very similar to comments that Counselor Sanjanko made, which is that I think, I think council should be encouraged to deal with matters efficiently. I think counselors, counselors can definitely make their points in less than three minutes at a time. And I find that when the language here, the only language here we have about speech limits is about 15 minutes overall. I mean, that really does, I mean, to me, it does suggest, when I first read this, I envisioned, you know, a Fidel Castro-like speech, of somebody coming in and taking up the entire, entire time. Like, it's, I, I mean, I guess it is, it's supposed to be to prevent that by having such a long, long limit. But I, I'd rather, I'd ra, I think it's much better if we're going to encourage counselors being concise and businesslike and efficient, to, to address the, the amount of time they speak at each turn, which is, which should be three minutes, two minutes, not, not 15. So that's, that's really where I'm coming from here. And then that's why I find this, this language that we've inherited to be problematic.
I think that I might be able to support this if that was changed to five minutes and, and we retain the restriction of a total of 15. How does that strike me?
I'll put it forward as that, as a compromise of, like, this.
Counselor, all right.
Can we just get that reiterated? It, it did go around for a bit.
Yeah. So I think, so I think what Section 11 is starting to look like would be the following rules applied to limit speech on matters being considered at a council meeting. Sub A would be, a member may speak more than once in connection with the same question only after all eligible members have been afforded the opportunity to speak. Sub 2, um, now, actually, it better help me here, Counselor, if this is the, a member may speak, this is when you have the, the opportunity part for five minutes.
In one opportunity?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's get back to that. A member may speak for longer than five minutes in one opportunity only with the permission of counsel.
Okay. And then the third, Sub C, would be what you have there now, which is a member may speak to a question or speaking required for longer than a total of 15 minutes only with the permission of counsel. Is that, yeah, does do a consensus?
Yeah, I think it does.
Okay. So Counselor Berry, you, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you want to go second that, Counselor White?
Okay.
Other favor then? And that's Carrie. Okay. So you gotta do something with Sub 12 now, don't you?
So I, yeah, I question why we need it.
So as committee of the whole, so we're basically saying we're not putting any restrictions in, in committee of the whole.
Whenever you're have to.
Okay?
So move to the 12.
All right. So second question, Counselor Sanjanko. Dave, are you sure, Counselor Berry, did you have, did you want to go alone, or?
I just, yeah, I just want to point out that, you know, in this, in a future coun, you know, it's, well, they're not going to have to do this, but in a future council, filibuster, committee of the whole, and really disrupt everybody's life. I, you know, we can make it longer than 15 minutes for committee and the whole, but be inclined to, you know, it could be an easy, for a total maximum of 15 minutes for council and next 15 minutes for committee and the whole, which is simply get, get that in there in case it ever comes up.
Okay. So I, are you suggesting then, yeah, so, actually, right, the, the difference here, actually, on this one, for committee of the whole, is that it's saying a member can speak any number of times on the same question. So that's different from council. So that, that doesn't limit your opportunity to engage. And there is, at the moment, a 15 minute- fifteen minute total limit, so you're suggesting that might be a little bit longer in case of committee of the whole? Am I understanding that?
Right.
One, thirty? Yeah. Bear in mind, yeah, bear in mind that council still always controls the meeting. I mean, truly, if somebody, if somebody was out of hand, the rest of council can vote to adjourn or something like that, Counsel Valerian.
I, I think by all these limits, to me, I think, I think sometimes we're, we're underestimating the, the authority that we delegate to the presiding member, the chair, to move business along, and I think, I, I have, I always have a lot of confidence in that authority of meetings, meetings being shared well, and that's why when rules are relaxed, I think they can be relaxed, and we can also, we can also rely on a presiding member to use the authority that's delegated to that person to move a meeting along.
Okay, so where are we at here with this sub twelve?
I was, I was moving to delete it.
You're okay with deleting it? Okay, all right.
I mean, I think it was seconded, and so withdraw my objection.
Okay. All right, so let's move by Counsel White, second, Counsel Sanjanko, all in favor then? Okay, that's Carrie. Sub thirteen?
This is one of the oddest placed items in this whole bylaw. It's, it's talking about, so really, this, this whole, I think we've all recognized by just going through it for quite a, quite a long period of time here, that this section, this clause is talking about conduct of debate, and tacked onto it, there's, there's an item here about members being disqualified from holding office if they're absent from a number of meetings, which is a completely different topic. So it's also something that's, that's governed in, by, by provincial legislation, so I don't think it's needed in our bylaw. It's not, it's not related to anything in here, motions or anything, so I find it odd, and I think we can rely on provincial legislation, so I propose to delete it.
And Selena, unless you know something else, I'm inclined to agree, it's in the charter, it's, I mean, if this was the reverse saying that a person won't be disqualified, it wouldn't stand up anyways, so, so it is redundant, I don't have an issue with that, does anybody else? So that's moved by Counsel Silas, lead, Counsel Valerian, second, so in favor, Carrie? All right, okay, Janko, I need it. But make sure you come back tonight.
I will, yeah.
And, you know, you want us to be out here before, too? Okay, so now you've got some others, actually seventeen, sub seventeen?
Yeah.
Sub twenty.
This is the delegations, and I, I think Counsel Valerian has some comments on delegations, too. I, I found that we had, we had a discussion on delegations, and it almost seems like what, what we ended up with, some, some points may contradict each other in some ways, or, it is so, I think, the Harper office did a very good job of trying to grade everybody's points and ideas, but I don't know if it ends up being very cohesive. So I mean, I find, for me, I find number, number three to kind of just override everything else. The delegation may, a delegation may simply show up at a meeting and say, we want to present, which is a unanimous vote, and it's good, so I, yeah, I see that, and I'll just comment on number nine, too, and that's, I find number nine to be, to be redundant with number seven. I don't, I don't understand why, why both are needed, so, I mean, seven seems to cover it for me. They are slightly different, but number seven seems to be more, cover more.
I think number seven, the intent of number seven was to ensure that council and committee meetings weren't turned into public hearings on an item that a public opportunity to speak is going to come up, whereas number nine is a statutory requirement, you cannot hear submissions after a public hearing, so it's really important for the public to know, they should expect to be turned down if they apply to speak on a matter that we've had a public hearing on.
Okay, well, let's, let's make, let's start with number three, sub three. I mean, if we took it out, that's actually, makes for a pretty easy, easy choice for council. The purpose behind it, I think, was that if somebody needed to appear as a delegation, or wanted to appear as a delegation, hadn't made the request in time, but it was something that was time-sensitive and council felt was appropriate, this gave them that opportunity, I think. Otherwise, taking it out in theory basically says, if you haven't put in a written request in time, don't bother showing up at all and even asking, which, you know, makes it easy to turn it down, but...
We would have to look at the language in the late items section as well then, because this basically gives a delegation the same right as any other late item, to come forward and be as a part of the agenda adoption procedure, to be accepted by council by unanimous vote. So if we're going to exclude this from a potential late item, we'll have to ensure that the late criteria reflects that.
Just in a meeting here, but Tracy's texting me because Simone needs to be picked up.
Late item criteria.
Yeah, so this basically gives a delegation the same right as any other late item.
What section, what sections are?
Seventeen, I believe. Seventeen, no, that's late, I lose the sixteen. Speaks to an item of business not on the agenda. So nineteen, seventeen, three gives a delegation the same rights as any other item of business coming forward at the time of adoption of the agenda. So if we're not going to permit that, we would have to ensure the language is strengthened in this area to say it will not be considered under seventeen or sixteen, whatever the new clause is now.
I just, I'm having trouble seeing the, the reason for taking it out. It would require a unanimous vote of council for the delegation to appear, so I just, I can't, I come back to that question of harm, and I'm just not seeing the harm in this provision, I don't think. Counsel Sanjanko.
I, I think in this case, now that I understand the difference between seven and nine, I think that's what it was, and I do think there might be those instances, you know, few and far between, whether it's an emergency or, but, but I do think three still, you know, probably has a role to play, and it does take a unanimous vote. So I'm, I'm okay with those three still in there, I think.
You know, I mean, yeah, so which one were you suggesting, you know, to Counsel White?
Three and nine, and I'm okay with, with leaving them both. I think it was just good to have this discussion. I found that, you know, I do find it's quite a lengthy way to, way to address our concerns with delegations, and I, I wish we could have it more streamlined, but I guess we, we happen to have a lot of complicated concerns and issues that we brought up, so.
Okay, all right.
I know that, but I do know that Counsel Valerian had some, oh, sorry, concerns about it, too, which he's got ideas that, yeah, here.
I understand, I mean, they're, they're separating nine as, public hearings already been held, which is making sense, I mean, that probably covered under some other, but sake of clarity. Number seven is public input opportunity will be held on the matter of the future, so I, I, I'm, I'm suggesting that, I guess, my first question's to staff. I mean, I understand that it's a hand statement, but I don't real, I don't know if I understand what staff actively, actively dealing with. I mean, if there's, there's public in, well, it, the staff part seems somewhat irrelevant to me, though, I guess what I, what I was thinking was, delegation not appear regarding matters for which no public, for which a public meeting is scheduled, or can reasonably be expected to be scheduled, or a public meeting scheduled in the near, near future. I just, it's something that, that says, you know, not, it can't be refused because there may be a public meeting, but one day, we definitely don't know when, or where it will be in the process, or whether, you can't guarantee that it will ever occur, so, I would just, unless there's a real necessity for the staff, staff are actively dealing with, it just, to me, puts some kind of barrier there where council says we're not, we're not, what's on the staff are dealing with, and I don't, I don't understand why that would be, but in the other case, I would, I suggest putting a specific timeframe on it, but maybe prepare, just go in the near future, public input opportunity will be held in the near future, just to kind of tighten it up a little bit.
Amen.
Three was, it's not something that, and I know, some of you might have a wrong view, I feel that this is a very strong reason to give someone. It's here, it came with the bylaw. I think that the public hearing, without question, I think it's good to have there. In a lot of ways, seven somewhat contradicts three in that we make the decision on behalf of council with, for that particular reason, and I think legislatively, we have a very strong reason in this case, so, Selena has to add to that, but my view of seven is not, it's something we're going to live without at this point from my view.
Okay, so that one, just for clarification, that was added after the orientation session with Allison Hadkirk, and her suggestion when members of council asked her how to deal with constant public, or requests from the public to appear on a matter, contentious matter in the community where a public hearing was forthcoming, and her suggestion, and this is her wording, was to include a clause of this nature, which she said Sanjanko had, and it worked quite well for her.
Yeah, certainly, you know, the concern that I had was, you know, a public hearing is intended to be an opportunity for everyone to hear both sides of a, of an issue, or all sides of an issue, I guess, not necessarily both sides. And when you're, when sort of one element tries to sort of dominate delegations to advance their position as something that's appropriately brought forward at a public hearing, when everybody else can hear what's being proposed, that's what it's kind of intended to do. But I do hear what Counsel Valerian's saying about the staff are actively dealing with, that it may be appropriate to take that out of there, so perhaps should be something more along the lines of delegations are not to appear regarding matters for which a public input opportunity will be held on the matter in the, and you could probably, probably should say near future, I suppose, I, the future is a bit too, too out there.
I think you would probably want to attach a timeline to that. I think the near future is still too subjective.
I know, I know. It's going to drive them a bit, you know.
Could you say matters that are currently under consideration, and a public opportunity will, will be provided? We need to have the timelines, or that there's a public input opportunity attached for statutory reasons?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we want to be clear that it's tied to the fact that we're expecting there is going to be a public, a public input opportunity, whatever form that may take.
Okay, a required public input opportunity? That would limit it to anything requiring a public hearing, so zoning, OCP, fair to issue.
Okay, well, that might work. So, what would the...
So a required public opportunity, and a required public, required opportunity will be held.
Delegations are not to appear regarding matters...
Currently under consideration, and...
For which a public opportunity will be...
A required public input opportunity will be held.
Okay, well, just try reading that back.
So it will be, delegations are not to appear regarding matters currently under consideration, and for which a required public input, input opportunity will be held.
Okay, does that, does that, does that work?
So, okay, so there's nothing required by legislation, then?
And it's open season.
Wouldn't be doing.
So the Rogers Communications Tower, for example, would have been open to delegations?
Yeah, I'd originally envisioned a public meeting, which might include a town hall or, or a public hearing, and then, and then actually, I meant a timeframe on it, I mean, I suggested three months. So, I don't know if we want open season on things, or, possibly, I don't, sort of see years, I mean, by law, but...
Or we'll have a public hearing.
Right, if we don't, we could limit those delegations by holding a, a meeting of another kind, and then we don't have to go through the, the delegation business whenever we've got it planned or scheduled. I'm, I'm okay with the, I mean, the, I mean, it makes sense, required public hearing, it opens up a bit, but there's other things about, you know, repeating, getting information on this, I think, the maximum ten minutes.
You could say forge an open house for a required public input opportunity will be held.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the open house, really, it's just, not really, there's no input there, so.
Public meeting, or required public, sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to, to help confirm Counsel Valerian's point. I think what we're trying to do is, is in fact, get the point across that we're not, we're not trying to limit public input, we're trying to channel it more effectively. So I think we need to be careful with this wording in that it's not just a public hearing, but it's also a future town hall meeting, where, you know, it's, there's different opportunities for public input, and it's not just statutory requirements, but, you know, in my view, we're trying to just channel how it happens, not limit it from happening.
I agree.
Could we, could we put wording, sorry to belabor it, but could we put some wording in that, that also reflects a possible town, future town hall meeting?
So, so delegations are not to appear regarding matters that are, was it currently, what did you say?
Currently under consideration.
Currently under consideration, and for which a public input opportunity will be provided?
Will be held.
Will be held.
Required public input opportunity will be held for a town hosted, public meeting.
Well, it covers, the public input opportunity covers that. You don't have to get that, in other words...
Okay, so we're back to public input opportunity not required?
Not required, no. It's, delegations are not to appear regarding matters that are currently under consideration, and for which a public input opportunity will be held. Okay, we go with that? And, okay. All right, so, we're going to move that one, Counsel Sanjanko, and second, then, Counsel White, okay? All in favor then? That's Carrie, okay. Getting close, getting close. Nineteen, points of order. I should have my buzzer right now.
So, I think for all of, probably for the rest of them, for most, most of the rest of them, they, they apply to Mayor Rowe's earlier comments earlier about kind of the, we have Robert's Rules of Order, but if we have, we have, I mean, I completely agree that if we can clarify everything in here, that's better. I think when it doesn't clarify it, and it's just more confusing, then I'd rather not have it here. I think it, I think it, and that's, that was my thinking on the other matter that, that we decide should remain about the points of order. But it's also my feeling about section nineteen, too, it just jumps into points of order, and I don't really understand it. I mean, I've had a lot of experience with chairing meetings and... and, uh, Robert's Rules, and I don't, I don't find this language clarifies how points of order are dealt with or why points of order are made, it just seems to dive in halfway through, and that's why I think this is a case where it'd be easier to fall back on Robert's Rules and to go to this language because I go to this language and I just, I don't, it, it means nothing to me.
All right, can you remind what the point, what the points of order are?
Points of order is usually appear running contrary to the rules of the meeting, so basically nineteen.
Yeah, so for example, where we had the, uh, okay, here's an example, where we are having a restriction on fifteen minutes, uh, talking, so counselor is rambling on, and maybe we've sort of kind of let it go a bit, you know, counselor could say point of order, uh, like, you know, the fifteen minutes is up.
If, yes, if you have those rules of procedure in your bylaw, you have the ability to raise a point of order on them, if they're in your bylaw and another counselor doesn't raise them, the obligation is still on the presiding member to raise them, regardless of whether another member has raised a point of order. And then number two cites what happens when a point of order is raised.
Just to clarify, if it's not in here, if we take out number nineteen, does that exclude us from being able to do that?
Uh, no, if there, there are other things, if you take out, if, if you take out the limits on speech, then you can't raise a, a point of order with respect to somebody speaking too long, because there's nothing in your bylaw that says that there's a length on how to, how long they can speak, so your point of order is to raise a point of order that's running contrary to the rules that you've established to, to run your meeting.
Yeah, and, and actually where it came up several times, uh, the last term is where inquiries didn't become inquiries and went on for too long, and some members of council had, had raised a point of order on that, quite rightfully, that's, that's really what you're, what it does, right?
Or if the inquiry is.
Okay, so.
A statement of non-inquiry.
Yeah, I guess I, 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 and basically, uh, we do have an overriding clause, I think about Robert's Rules of Order, don't we?
Yes, but Robert's Rules of Order don't address limits on speech, so if you don't have that in your procedures bylaw, there are limits on speech, just for example.
Yeah, but the limit, we do have limits on speech, so.
Yes, yes.
So this, um, okay, so, yeah, I, okay, I don't have a problem taking that out if that's, that's will, uh, doesn't, it doesn't take away any powers, I see it, control the meeting. I'll move, sorry, we're moving to section eighteen. Any other thoughts on this one?
I guess in, in moving it, I'll, I'll say that if, if this, if this section actually covered everything we just talked about, and talked about what points of order were and why we bring them up, maybe it would be helpful to us, but instead it just skips to the end and, and I, I don't find it very helpful at all, and even, I mean, even when it gets to the, the end, it seems to be needlessly complicated to me, not, not the experience I've, I've had myself or, or seen anyone else have in deciding on points of order.
Yeah, I think that they try to capture that in, even really say it's when something is running contrary to the rules established in this procedures bylaw, you can raise a point of order.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, um, just dressed the presiding member, um, so that it, just to clarify that it's covered under Robert's Rules and we can, so, our, specifically our bylaw, we can bring up things in our bylaw?
Yes, yes.
All, all segment, then.
Okay, I'm, I'm not hung up on it, so, all right, so we'll take, uh, section nineteen up, and, and all in favor? Okay. Okay, twenty-two. Twenty-two.
This is another one, somebody's written one away that just gives me headaches, um, I think the, the point C at the end, two C is important, I think that makes a lot of sense to have in our, um, in our procedure bylaw, that a member of council must not reintroduce a motion previously defeated at the same meeting unless the motion is materially altered so as to make it a new subject, I think that's like a, good rule that we should follow, um, the rest of this just seems completely meaningless to me, so I'll, I'll see if anybody else has any explanation why, why it can be useful to us.
Your question.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, Counsel White. I do, actually, do you see the value of this, if it's covered, and it is, I'm sure it's covered under Robert's Rules, so we could default to that, but I, sometimes this is the same thing, if it's going on and on, somebody says, move to call a question, then it's a valuable exercise and, um, let's end the debate and call it to a vote, so, um, he said, but I don't think it's any different than what's under, what's in Robert's Rules, and it's like, never going to be used, so it probably isn't even that page that it's taking up, um, but, uh, you know, we're into a philosophical question, do all counselors need to read Robert's Rules, they probably, they should.
Yes.
So, so in that case, you know.
As soon as things are short.
Yeah, well, um, I, I'm, personally, I'm not seeing the harm in this, and it's clear that, uh, exactly what Counsel Valeria's raised there, at a certain point we move to have the, the vote if it's, uh, becoming unnecessarily tedious, so, um, I, I'm not going to support changing that.
And keep in mind that you do have to outline in your procedures bylaw, because your procedures bylaw, as tedious as it may seem, is the bylaw that lays out how you run your meetings, and one of the requirements is how are resolutions made and adopted, and this is a part of that process, that is a requirement under the charter to explain how your resolutions are made at a meeting.
Okay, um, next one was twenty-three sub-six.
Yeah. Adopted amendments, that, that just makes no sense to me, um, and, you know, I'm saying that a lot, but when, when a, when a motion is amended, that's the motion, there's no adopted amendment, because I, I would argue there's no such thing as an adopted amendment, I mean, it's, and there's an amended motion, you can have an amended motion, and an amended motion can be amended again, but I, I don't know what this is in reference to.
Okay, so, how I see this one then is that, so a motion is made, um, a motion is made to buy a fire truck, and then a counselor says, um, I'd like to amend that to, say, price, uh, some candy more than X dollars, so that's, that's an amendment to the motion, we have to vote on the amendment before we can vote on the motion, so we vote on the amendment, it's passed, and then another counselor, somebody says, oh, I insist that it be a Ford, that would be an amendment to that amendment, so, am I, am I setting this up, I think, and so that would be, so, uh, so another counselor could propose an amendment to the adopted amendment, the adopted amendment is that we buy a fire truck, X dollars, the amendment, the, the second amendment to that is to amend it to that it be a Ford truck, or not less than, or not more than X dollars, and then we go to the main motion, that's, that's sort of what that's about, doesn't come up very often, I don't think, but, my, so, as otherwise, once, there would be no ability to, like, have to rescind, I guess you could always rescind even, and start over, just, constantly.
Yeah, I guess my, my understanding of Robert's Rules is, uh, when, when a motion is amended, it becomes an amended motion, um, and then, and another, another amendment, the amendment about the Ford can, can also come up, that's, and that's treated as a new amendment, it's, it's, there's no, there's no distinction between an amended motion and the, having to, the adopted amendment, I, this, this concept of an adopted amendment, this is the first time I've ever seen it really, um, once.
amended.
An amended amendment, that's something different, yeah, I mean, if, if an amendment comes up and then, and during that time someone wants to amend the amendment before it's adopted, that can happen once, um, and that's in Robert's Rules, and I think it's mentioned here too, it can't be, it can't be done, yeah, it's number four, it can't be done twice, but this concept of once an amendment is already adopted, it still exists as an amendment, or an adopted motion is, is not something I've ever seen before, and it's confusing, and, and look it up.
Robert's Rules does get very complicated, if you can envision the, the nesting, the nesting cups that we all play with as children, so you have a motion on the table, it's not voted on, it's the first and second, if I had your cup, I could put it right over it, that becomes the amendment, you need to deal with that amendment before you can deal with the motion, so you end up with an adopted amendment, then you still have a motion to deal with, have you ever seen those children's toys that are little plastic triangle, or little plastic rectangles that get smaller and smaller and they fit inside each other? If you think of it like that, the minute you put one over the motion, you need to deal with that amendment before you can get back to the motion, so you end up with an adopted amendment, and then you end up with a motion that you vote on the motion as amended, so it is procedurally correct in the bylaw?
Right, well, you know what, um, that's, that's what we pay a corporate officer for, I'm just, uh, it's not enough for me to, I'm going to have to spend much more time on, unless, but you're perfectly free to make the motion, obviously.
I have to make the motion, because it's just, on principle, uh, that's not, it's, it, it's, it's confusing because it's way too detailed and, it's not necessary.
I'm going to defer to the corporate officer, but maybe we could, that is, Counsel Valeria, you know, I, I second, and second, and all in favor? Opposed?
Yeah, I think.
Defeated? Okay, uh, twenty-four.
May I, I apologize to the, maybe I'm running up against a hard four block deadline that I've already stretched, twenty minutes, um, I have one, one that might be quite quick, with, with Counsel White, and then I will leave the rest in, in your capable hands, um, section fifteen, I should have done, I should have now addressed it, we're here in section fifteen, uh, for our business, fifteen-two D, uh, currently says, uh, questions must be related to an item on the agenda, this is inquiries, um, I'm going to move to recommend that we amend it to priority will be given to questions related to agenda items, uh, with the idea, that's the end of the text, with the idea that the chair would say, are there inquiries related to agenda items, get through those, and if there's still time left in this ten minutes, then go to general, inquiries, so, we, yeah, new two D, uh, our motion for the new two D is priority will be given to questions related to agenda items.
We finally succeeded in driving, driving out all the press, and the only reason Michelle's still here, because she has a clatter calendar.
I would support Counsel Valeria's.
Okay, so what's it read, just give me that, Cole's no duration, please.
Uh, instead of questions must be related to the item on the agenda, it is priority will be given to questions related to agenda items.
Okay, so that's two sub-D.
Yeah.
Question, a priority will be given to questions related to an item on the agenda. Okay, that's your motion?
Yeah.
Second, Counsel Sanjinko, second, all in favor then, Carrie, okay, thank you, hopefully we'll wrap this up.
Yeah, possible, one reconsideration, this is one that we, we talked about quite extensively when this, this bylaw first came to us, and, uh, I think it felt to me like the consensus was, let's get rid of this, because we talked about it for a long time, and I, hopefully we don't have to, we have to have the same discussion again, but we talked about it for a long time, talked about how it relates to the charter and what's already in the charter, and I, I feel like, uh, from our discussion, we concluded that the charter was sufficient, and having this other language just really confuses matters, and, uh, the corporate officer may have a, a better recollection than, than I do, but I think what our main consensus coming to that meeting unfortunately was that we were just going to, um, get a report done so that, um, items like that that we already discussed weren't necessarily addressed in that.
No, I can't say recall, that's myself, so I just, um, I, I don't think we ever addressed the problem that, uh, that we've got a conflicting way of reconsidering, kind of a unique conflicting way of reconsidering at our level compared to the reconsideration by the mayor's authority that's available in the charter.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right, we had a long, long discussion on it, uh, council didn't arrive at any, any resolution at that particular meeting, so when the worksheet-type report was brought back early February, uh, Sash recommendation was to change this to those who had voted on the affirmative side, and that was what council endorsed at that meeting, so we can certainly, we can certainly remove it, that's not a problem, but.
So you're referring to one of course, sub-two, but specifically there?
Uh, I think entire twenty-four, if you can print it.
Oh, all right, okay.
Is there another one? Yeah.
Okay, so, I, I, I guess I'm not following your concern here, Counsel White, so can you try to start over again?
Well, I, I do recall the conversation, um, really what seemed, that what came out of it was, was we could just rely on, we, I felt like we were satisfied with the reconsideration that was available in the charter, and we didn't need the special reconsideration, uh, but if that's, uh, really, we felt like it just really confused matters, that's, that's what I got out of the conversation, of having, um, having this other kind of way of.
So the only, the only reconsideration provision in the charter is for the mayor to, to bring it back, that's it.
But Robert's Rules allows anyone who voted on the affirmative side to reconsider an item, which is basically what this does now at this point, it just inserts it into your bylaw so that you've got one point of reference for those types of things.
Or to resent, but, but I, yeah, I, I'm fine with keeping this, that's, I, I just didn't, I just felt at the time that we were, we were leaning towards getting rid of it and just relying on, uh, you know, having all these different ways of handling it, it's more, just more confusing to me.
More comfortable. Leaving about our sub-three there, uh, Selena, the reference to section twenty-six-one needs to be changed because that, there is no twenty-six-one right now, probably not, okay, uh, okay, uh, twenty-five, sub-twenty-five, privilege is just one of those other items, uh, like points of order, uh, that we dealt with earlier, that I think, um, I, I think just confuses matters more than what Robert's Rules already offers, um, it, it jumps right in a matter of privilege refers to any of the following motions without explaining what, what privilege really is, and I, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to, um, suggest that we try to explain what a matter of privilege is, I think it's even confusing in Robert's Rules, I think it's, I mean, I, I think it's best to leave out of our procedural bylaw because it's best to be avoided, really, is my, my view, um, and it's always, it's always, uh, something that's, that's, that's open to misuse. Okay, so, uh, so I guess the question is, if that wasn't there, section twenty-five, where, where, where does that, where does that leave us, I, I know that these are just Robert's Rules of Order, but what, what does that then look like, is that just the same thing that we're seeing here, is it different?
Uh, no, this, this actually does reiterate Robert's Rules, and, uh, again, that was the discussion that we had in earlier meetings, the value of. that we had in earlier meetings, the value of keeping some of this basic fundamental parliamentary procedure in your council's by, your council procedures bylaw so that you do have one point of reference. So, if you look at A, B, and C in that section, those are privilege motions, there's, there's a difference, there's privilege motions and there's motions of privilege. So, privilege motions allow a person the ability to end the meeting when they are basically ready to leave the meeting. So, Counsel Valeria did not want to miss out on the rest of this discussion, he would move to adjourn the meeting and the items that were still left on the agenda would be moved to the next meeting and he would be available for that discussion. So, it gives him the ability to make a motion to ensure that he's there for further debate on any items still on the agenda. Recession is to do with, you need a break and if you feel that you need a break because you're not able to continue to participate in the meeting in an effective way because you just need to get up and stand around it, that just gives you the right to ask for that and receive that.
Okay, well, I guess I'm not seeing the harm in leaving it there.
Okay, so that, yeah, I don't, that seems fine to me if that's what it means, but I mean, I think it's just because that's not explained very well in this language that it's very easily confused with the point of privilege. That's, that's my problem, when I see, when I see privilege, I think point of privilege and I didn't, I didn't see this as motions of privilege, which now, now I understand it, but the problem is that's not explained in this language, so.
Okay, you're fine. Okay, I'll leave that alone.
Okay.
I believe to the next council, I guess.
Please always ask, you need to.
Yeah, no, no, no. Yeah, I still come from the, the approach that we shouldn't have to ask, I mean, it should be clear language that, that anybody can understand. Your last one is thirty-three. Thirty-three, and that, oh, is that rising?
Yes.
Yeah, that's another one that, it's quite a, kind of an obscure, taken from Robert's Rules, which I don't, I read it here, I don't, I don't see how it's relevant to us.
And is it relevant because it's talking about committee of the whole, is it still relevant to us? Are we not taking a more relaxed approach, so is it still relevant?
I don't even know what it means.
Exactly, right, get rid of it. I believe we get rid of it.
Unless you can, unless you can tell me there's a real critical.
I can't clarify it, yeah. So, in the way that the town uses committee of the whole generally, you're basically operating as a standing committee, so you wouldn't rise and report, but committee of the whole in the true parliamentary source or is where you're sitting in a council session and an item comes up on the agenda that requires a more relaxed debate, you resolve in council to move into committee of the whole, it's recognized in parliamentary order. You move into committee of the whole, you discuss whatever the item council sends you in there with in a more relaxed environment and you rise and report. You cannot adjourn committee of the whole meeting because it's not the meeting that's called to order. So, it is the appropriate process to end a properly constituted committee of the whole. Does that make sense?
Yeah, Counsel White?
Yeah, that's, that's what I understand it to be too and I mean, and I, we, we used to, I've, I've done this before, but I just feel like in the context of the, this bylaw, it's really confusing where it is right here and only confuses things and doesn't, especially when it's coming after committee of the whole meetings and it's another thing that, it's in Robert's Rules of Order, if we really need it.
Here's, here's my feeling is, I almost, I find it very difficult the next four years to anticipate ever going to committee of the whole, I'll probably eat my words now. Council meeting.
I'm gonna move it now.
And you have been accommodating some issues and I'm done, so if you want to move to take it out, I'm.
No, we have to take it out, I can't with it.
I, I, I'm okay with that.
Oh, oh. You don't have a second or? Okay, no, I'm saying you may have to try again at the council meeting, so at the moment it's still there.
Okay, I'll try again at the council meeting and, and I don't have support here.
All right. Motion to adjourn, please.
There's another.
Oh, geez.
Sorry.
No, I have to.
I'm trying to remember my question. Michelle March, one-nine-one, Warf Road, thank you, Mayor and Council. My question is, going back to the garbage issue and specifically the bear issue with commercial garbage, and I, my thought is that if we're using this opportunity just to put a lock on a bin, that's really not removing the problem and the problem really is the organics that are in the, in the commercial garbage and we have a really, really good opportunity here in this town for composting our organics and I'm just going to ask if that maybe this issue that was brought forward would be a good opportunity to educate the commercial retailers to deal with their garbage in a different way. Thank you.
Right, yeah, thank you. Good point, and I know that organic is going to be a point of discussion with this council, so, thank you. Motion to adjourn. Counsel White, Counsel Sanjanko, all in favor? Thank you.